I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. We'll start with the flag salute, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as they're submitted.
Second?
Okay. We can do that on a voice vote.
Yeah.
Not yet.
Just call the vote.
Okay. I'd like to call the...
Opening flag, salute, roll call.
The minutes seem to be in order. I'd like to call the vote, please.
Mr. Blakeley?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Howlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Chairman Rogers?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay.
I would add, as far as the attendance goes, Commissioner Mobley did call in. He's working out of town this week. And then Commissioner McLendon has a potential conflict of interest with a business agenda item. So I told, I just said I'd, to save her the trip for the one single agenda item, I told her I would say it for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'd like to open, we have the opportunity for public comments, and this is an opportunity to speak on items which are not on the agenda tonight. Limited to three minutes per speaker. Please state your name and stuff. We are not able to take any action on anything brought up during this initial comment period. Do we have any comments? Okay. Hearing done. I guess we'll move on to item number one, the business. This is a public hearing to consider the approval of a conditional use permit for Creations Auto Body Shop by Kevin Bradley.
Thank you, Chairman Rogers and Planning Commissioners. So yeah, this is an application for a conditional use permit to operate an auto body shop in an existing building located at 280 12th Street, shown on the aerial photograph on the overhead. It's located on 12th Street, which runs north-south on the map. And then I Street runs east-west. So it's just at the northwest corner there. And you can see the high school is across the street. This is the high school parking lot and the high school buildings, single-family residence on two sides, and multifamily residence on the third side. I think there are a couple of businesses here. So businesses and then multifamily residential. So the area, it is bordering the downtown area. It's not quite in the central, downtown central business district, but it is in an old part of town. So it's an existing building we do call an infill project. Proposed uses, I'll go to the site plan. This is the applicant's submitted site plan. And you have the large sheets. I'm sorry, it doesn't show up really well on the aerial, but you can see the main components. They did a great job on the site plan. It was really detailed and had a lot of information on it. So the main, let's see, we've got 12th Street is at the bottom of the map, and I Street is on the left, or the right side there. And the existing building, the main building is, you can see it there in the tan color. There is a smaller outbuilding to the left in the far corner. And then for square footages, the proposed uses would be 9,620 square feet in the large part of the building. That would be the auto body shop. 1,800 square feet of office on the ground floor, 1,600 square feet of storage on that main building. And then the main building also has a second floor of office, 600 square feet. And then the detached building is about 1,870 feet, square feet, which includes a carport, a small shop, and storage. And the total lot size is 84,263 square feet. And you can see there is quite a large amount of asphalt paving for both car and truck maneuvering and also for parking. The commercial or customer parking is on the front there. It includes an ADA space and then an electrical charging station there as well. The dark line here is the ADA path of travel from the public sidewalk to the entrance and to the ADA parking stall. So those are all improvements that don't exist now that will be an upgrade through this project. And then employee parking is in the rear. The improvements for the site will be obviously just general site cleanup and building improvement. At this point, there aren't any immediate plans to change the exterior of the building. There will be some remodeling and improvements on the interior to bring, you know, to bring in equipment and to upgrade certain components. There may be some physical changes as far as the entryway. They weren't proposed at this time. The parking stalls will be an improvement. Sidewalks along 12th, or along I Street will be added. So currently, there are sidewalks along, a sidewalk along 12th Street, and then no sidewalk along I Street. So that will be installed. So that will be a definite improvement. And also landscaping strip, a five-foot landscaping strip along the frontage of 12th, and then along a portion of I Street between the parking lot and the public street. And also the existing fence. There's a chain link fence there now, but it will be replaced with a new chain link fence. So that will be an improvement. And then new signage will eventually be added. So the exterior improvements, the landscaping signage, and if the building colors are changed, those are subject to design review. They're not ready for that at this stage. We do allow, in the past, we have allowed deferral of design review. So that's a condition of approval for the conditional use permit that that will be required when they make those changes. And that will be, because these are, those are components tied to the use permit, so that will need to be before an occupancy is allowed, that they come back, you know, in the sort of immediate future with the landscaping plans and building colors and signage. And that can all come to the Planning Commission for design review. Activities within the building, auto body repair, of course, in that main portion, including a paint booth, storage space and office space. All work will take place within the building. That's a condition of approval. Any activities on the rear or the west side of the building, they do indicate a covered, it's kind of hard to see on this map, but there's a covered area there. And that will be used for storage or light work, not equipment-generated work. So, and that's basically a noise mitigation to protect the neighbors to the west. So any equipment will be used inside the building. And those covered areas will be for light work, car washing, and storage, and things like that. Let's see, employees, there will be 10, up to 10 employees on site at any one time. And that was used to generate the parking for the employees on the west side of the building. So they do meet the parking requirement, as well as the employee, or customer parking. Hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. That did get left out of the conditions of approval, so I'd like to add that in before, you know, if someone makes a motion. The hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And that, in particularly because it's in the vicinity of residences, that would protect them from nighttime noise. So residential uses are usually more sensitive to noise at night, when they're more likely to be at home, and when there are less, you know, there isn't the ambient noise to kind of muffle it a little bit. So the applicant agreed to that without any, without any problem. As far as the land use, so the existing land use designation is public with the public facility zoning. That is in the process of being changed. So the city had purchased this property a number of years ago with the intent of constructing a lease department. That didn't work out. They found that for that purpose, this building was too expensive. So they're looking at other sites and would like to sell this property. It's been listed for a while. This applicant came forward. The idea was to rezone it earlier, and that's why the Planning Commission had acted on the recommendation last fall. But then it just, it got put on hold. But we did intend to change the zone just to make it easier to sell. So that is coming before the City Council, that rezone and general plan amendment on September 3rd. It is a condition of approval of the use permit that that rezoning become effective for purposes, you know, before this conditional use permit can be sort of activated. So it is a requirement. Obviously, having a commercial auto body shop would be in conflict with the uses that are in the public zoning. So that's kind of a cleanup matter that's in process. The Commercial Thoroughfare Zoning District does allow a range of automotive uses, including auto body repair facilities that are specifically listed as a conditional use, and that's why this is before you. The zoning code in the Commercial Thoroughfare Zoning District states that the purpose of the city zoning is to provide for retail, wholesale, highway, and heavy commercial uses, along with residential warehousing and distribution, maintenance, repair, and servicing activities. So the auto body shop, I think, generally does fit in with those types of uses. The conditions of approval, just really quickly, design review, as I've stated, is a condition. Outdoor parking and storage of vehicles is limited to 21 days per vehicle, and that's to prevent long-term parking of cars that aren't really in process of being repaired. The applicant agreed with that. He said it wouldn't be any problem. That's also the condition that we've used on a previous auto body shop use permit. All repairs must be done within an enclosed building. Outdoor storage of parts, tires, equipment, et cetera, must be screened from view with six-foot fencing. That's pursuant to municipal, Fortuna Municipal Code. Parking stalls may not be used for storage of materials or equipment other than automobiles. No storage of vehicles within the public right-of-way, obviously to keep the street clean and clear. Landscaping, let's see, Building Department has just generally obtained a building permit for any worker acquiring a permit. Engineering Department requested conditions that any car wash drains or interior building drains will be connected to the city sanitary sewer system, not the storm drain, and with the appropriate oil water separator to be installed. Engineering Department did request the driveway and the sidewalk sections. So those will be shown on the, on the final plan, which probably this, you know, might suffice. But before occupancy, they would need to have any details shown on that, the oil-water separator, I'm thinking, in particular. And then those would be reviewed and approved before the final occupancy would be allowed. That's our normal process. And then a sanitary sewer cleanup will be installed. So your staff report has the findings for use permits, and if you want to discuss any of those, I'll be happy to do that. So I will go through a couple more slides. These are the, just exterior photographs. This is pretty much standing at the corner of 12th and I. And you can see the fence that will be replaced. You can see, those are the two sides of the building that have the bay doors. There will be a sidewalk and partially a landscaping strip along this part of the street. So that will be cleaned up and made a little safer. I believe it's the intention that there will be no parking on this strip because the road is a little bit narrow. So with that sidewalk being constructed, it was felt that that would be a safer street. And then I don't think, you know, there's probably not the need for this business at least to park on that side of the street since they have ample onsite parking. And this is the rear. You can see a better view of the fence. It will be replaced. And the sidewalk location, and you can see those, the storage or awning areas that are not part of the interior of the building. And then this is the front, showing the office and the second floor office. And there will be a landscaping strip here. So I think that's going to make it a much nicer visual from the street. And that's it. And I will pass that back to the commission.
Okay, good.
I do. Number three on page 13, outdoor parking, storage of vehicles limited to 21 days per vehicle. Who's going to police that?
So that kind of a condition doesn't normally get policed, per se, unless there are complaints. So this gives us a method to enforce if there is a complaint. A lot of the older use permits that...
It'd be a lot simpler if the stored vehicles were behind a fence that, even a chain link fence that slatted, and then it wouldn't matter how many days they were there.
That, I mean, that's a good point. And it still does say on item, condition number five, that outdoor storage must be screened. That's parts, tires, equipment, et cetera, shall be screened. So in a way, those two might be seen to conflict with each other since the one condition is saying, hey, you can store some things with fence screening. And then the other one says you can only store vehicles in a state of repair for 21 days.
If I may piggyback on that, that was one of my comments I was going to bring up, too. And I'm assuming the petitioners here, I was one of those people to buy one of the very first Hondas when they came out. And I got sideswiped, and I ended up having to wait six weeks just for the car parts because they weren't available yet because it was that new of a vehicle. And I know for a fact that you probably can have times where you could have more than 21 days. Am I correct? Because of car parts, waiting for parts. So I understand the policing part, but I don't see how, if you're doing business, how we can enforce that if there's car parts that's out of the petitioner's control. And I'm not saying that we have to monitor that, but I understand it's a way of monitoring where it doesn't get out of hand. But if we are in a no, and we can see a process involved where parts are being waited on, I can see where the 21 days could be exceptioned in the process.
Yeah.
It sounds to me like this is just a lever for you to use in case something became a nuisance.
Right.
But barring that, which it seems like is unlikely, you know, given how much thought the petitioners have given to improving the streets, the right-of-ways, you know, moving those guy wires, which does provide a safer route to school, and then also including those landscaping strips, which would really, you know, improve our cityscape. I think it's unlikely. But I do appreciate that, you know, the city staff did put that, you know, back door in the policy if needed. Yeah.
I think we have way too many automobile repair facilities in Fortuna that are completely untidy and unacceptable. That's my opinion.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I don't want to add another one.
Yes.
You need to go to the...
Would you like to? Yeah.
Honestly, the way that it's going to be set up with the fences are all going to be very close to where they're, they're laid out now, besides on where we're going to be installing the sidewalk on I Street. All the cars that are actually being repaired and or restored, like Kevin's saying, in the process of waiting on parts or waiting on some, everything will be retained in the back of it. No different than my other two facilities. There are times, unfortunately, yes, cars get stuck. Our general repair process is actually 4.1 days, but unfortunately, there are times that backward stuff happens. They are never left in front of the shop. So there will be, like, besides a few employees, you know, maybe leaving a car there overnight or something rare, the front of it will be extremely clean at all times. It'll only be left behind.
So when I drive down 12th Street, I will not see cars?
There will be no, like, wrecked or in process, or, yeah, like cars waiting on repair process. They will all be behind. Because I, I've already measured it out. We could probably handle almost, right in the neighborhood of 50 cars at a time there, you would never see it. It's not, I understand and know and respect what you're talking about, as in other repair facilities, but I run a complete different operation than that. So.
And I have two additional quick questions, Liz. You made a comment, you wanted some added to the motion. What was that again? I didn't quite hear that.
Oh, that was the hours of operation?
Do you want us to add that to the motion?
Yes.
Specifically spelling out the hours of operation and day of the week?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other part on page six, I just want a point of clarification for me. Under the land use, about, in that first paragraph, about two-thirds of the way through, it talks about the process for the general plan and zoning amendment and the recommendation from Planning Commission, which was issued on October 8, 2019. Should that be 2018?
It should. That's a typo.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Because I remember doing that last year, I thought, but I...
Yeah.
We haven't had this year yet, so.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So, okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Is there any reason that Saturdays are not available as a time oper? I mean, nobody wants to work Saturdays, but there are times when you need to.
It seems reasonable to me to restrict it to Monday through Friday, frankly. As somebody who has lived near commercial areas, you know, this is a neighborhood, and I think as per Sandy's earlier comment about cars, you know, we want to do infill, we want businesses. But I think it is reasonable, considering there are a number of, you know, residences around there, to say, let's keep it to, you know, some business hours and give people a weekend.
Okay, so that was our limitation rather than your limitation? Yeah.
Just as we're adding that to the motion, we're trying to be clear.
Thank you. And there's actually two sides to that that I've thought about. Right now, at both my facilities, we do only run Monday through Friday, generally from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. But with that being said, actually with us moving into here, what I did think about, because of this is like a very generalized good location, I thought about being open to the public, as in writing, what we call writing estimates, taking in, dealing with insurance claims and stuff that we can actually service the public, but not repairing the cars. So it's kind of like serving coffee but not running the grinder, you know. So there's, we, I would hate to like, say we couldn't be open, but yet, you know, not have somebody in there greeting staff or customers.
Low decibel generation activities.
Yes. I mean, we're, literally would not be physically repairing cars, painting, or any of the noise attributes that go on with the type of business or that. But still possibly being open for, say, yeah, Saturdays to service.
Limited, limited business over limited hours on Saturday.
As a limited to public servicing of our customers, but not sort of running the machines.
I'm not adverse to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good, I mean...
I really...
Work Monday through Friday, and they may not have any time but Saturday to drop off, contact you about work.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, is, a lot of us know that business owners are just servicing, like, I mean, there's many times I'm there at 5:30 or 6:00 in the morning and/or from 6:30 or something at night for that reason. Someone doesn't already stress them enough to pay $1,000 deductible on their insurance. They don't want to miss two days of work dropping off a car. So I go in early to switch keys out or give them their thing. Yeah, that's...
I really appreciate how much thought you've given to the various aspects of this. I think that really, it certainly eases my mind as to the due diligence you've given to this project. Thank you.
So is this, are we amending the motion to agree that limited operation on Saturday?
Well, I was going, I've already kind of written something up where I would write a motion of the hours of business slash machine operation from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And then leave that back door open for him to consider doing the paperwork items on the other times and days. Is that loose enough, Liz, for us to work with? So I've kind of written that down already to add if it's, when we get to that point.
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? We are supposed to open this to public comment at some point during this process. For this specific business, do you have anybody else that would like to speak? Please state your name.
My name's Chris Broadstock. I'm a resident of Fortuna, and I manage the Tri Counties Bank here in Fortuna also. I'm here to voice my support for the project. I view 12th Street as one of the gateways to Fortuna. And if we're going to participate in building up Fortuna, and I think this is a great way to start, because when people enter our town, that's a place that they see. And first impressions are everything. Kevin's done a great job in Riedel. Like you said, his shop's very clean. He's very active in a lot of the community events. And the community events that we have in town draw all the people in town along that 12th Street. So I think it's a great opportunity to really kind of clean up the front porch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Egan, Coldwell Banker in Fortuna here, and the owner's there. Just so you know, this is kind of a two-pronged process. We're trying to get the conditional use permit to move forward so that he could give you the complete review or design for you, for you guys to take a look at. At the same time, we've got the city trying to do a couple of steps that are a requirement of the sale to bring forward to get the right zoning. So the city's been great in giving us all the information that we need. Had a lot of back and forth between DJ Kleek and, and the city staff. It's been great going back and forth. Kevin, the applicant, is really excited about doing it and really wants to make it a good place for the, for the city. If you look at his other two businesses, both in Riedel and McKinleville, they are really clean. He wants to do a lot of landscaping that will improve the site of the, this site that's been, you know, the same for many, many years. But it's been a great back and forth. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Do we, do we have any further public comment? Okay, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Voice vote? We're done. Okay, cool. Do we have any additional discussion on this?
I was going to say, we made the motion, we should call the vote. A yea or nay?
Right. Okay. So would anybody like to make a motion?
Motion to close public comment.
All those in favor, say aye.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Are we ready to make the motion then?
Oh, we've had...
I believe we're ready to make the motion.
Okay. I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution Number PC 2019-3015, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving a conditional use permit for an auto body repair shop in an existing building with the hours of operation for the business slash machine operation from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
I second.
Okay. That would be a roll call vote.
Mr. Blakeley?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Howlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Bradley?
Yes. Congratulations, Kevin.
Step one of the two-pronged process. Step one of the two-pronged process.
Right.
Good luck on the rest of it.
Okay, so. Do we have any additional staff communications?
In particular, I know that we're really busy. We have some upcoming things. We have a couple of, I think, three subdivisions that are in process of being reviewed that have little issues that are there being worked on. We do have a couple of conditional use permits for the next meeting. We're doing code enforcement, we talked about, I think, last time. And that hearing for that is tomorrow. Ronerville Road Enforcement. Yeah, that'll be in this room at- 2:30.
On what day was that?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? 2:30?
I didn't hear what it was for.
Oh, it's for a property nuisance violation on Ronerville Road.
Oh, one of those ones on Ronerville Road?
Yes.
At 2:30 tomorrow. I'll see if I can maybe make it from work. I think I live in that neighborhood.
Yes, I think you do.
And it's here at 2:30.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the commission on anything going on in the town? Well, always feel free to call or email if you have any questions. That's all we have.
And I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Ball and Trevor?
Aye.
Aye.